Ms. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Kazer.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Perkins.
Here.
Mr. Walter.
Here.
All right, council received the minutes from the February 11th meeting. Questions or motion? Motion to approve the February 11th minutes. Second.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kazer.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
You also received your current expenses. Any questions?
I had one question on the Glen Hill Road machinery company for $46,000.
It's for the build out of the new cloud salt road truck.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kazer.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
All right. Renee, do you have anything?
I actually don't have much to report on tonight. Just one incident was last weekend. There was a pretty large fight at a local establishment. I just want to take time to thank the guys for their work on that case. Had to come in and pull some overtime on that to get everything put together. So, and there was a suspect that was arrested for felonious assault out of that. So, I just want to thank them for that time getting that case wrapped up. That's all I have.
Good. Any questions? All right. Village Administrator?
I had a meeting with First Energy this morning. Tim apologized. He wanted to be here this evening to fill you all in on the transmission line upgrades, but he had a scheduling conflict. He just wanted me to pass along that within the next week we'll be seeing their crews out around town, mostly south and east of town, as they clear the tree lines first, and then they'll be coming in and replacing those power lines. We've also received, we had bid opening and received two bids for the water tower clean and paint. Working with Burgess and Nyepel to get the contractor with the lowest invest bid vetted and should probably have resolution to move ahead with that project at the next council meeting. Most likely to report, we had a clock tower committee meeting last week, and it went very well for the first meeting. Had some really great people step up to help us. We're always looking for more, but we're going to be doing a site visit with all of the committee members, go up and get some more skilled eyes on the issues that are at hand, and then we'll reconvene and come up with a game plan of how we're going to move forward on that. We had a concrete inspector out this morning to, and they're going to provide us a report on their findings and recommendations for the oxidation walls at the wastewater treatment plant. I've not received that report back from them yet. We've had three water main breaks in the last two weeks, so the up and down temperatures are not doing well for us. And speaking of, we've been filling potholes village wide, so we're on pothole patrol. If you see any, give us a call. And last but not least, we're continuing to prepare and apply for the various permits and applications necessary for the demolition of the restroom at the park. That is all I have unless there's any questions.
All right. Thank you. And questions for Tuesday?
The only thing I wanted to bring up is the possibility of a work session. We, Mayor and I, have spoken about possibly March 18th. So you can, I don't think you have to decide tonight on that, but it works for everyone. We had talked about possibly, if it is pleasing to all of you, to do a work session. And there was a time we did one a month, and due to budget cuts, we cut those back. But we kind of talked about the possibility of doing one every quarter to kind of do some of the nuts and bolts that we can't quite get into tonight. So that's kind of, I just want to float that out there and kind of have you think on it. You want it for a week or so and let me know what you think. But we have scheduled one for March 18th to kind of process the budget and where we go from here and get all on the same page and kind of think about the strategic plan or what the future looks like for Plain City. It's about time to kind of do that process again. It's been a while since the village has looked at that, so that's kind of on the agenda for the 18th meeting. Probably be, could do six or seven. Just let, we'll communicate. But does that sound like something that we could? I have a prior commitment that day. We can pick another, is that a Tuesday? Yeah. Would there be another Tuesday to do work maybe or?
Any other Tuesday that month is fine with me.
Except for 25th.
Yeah, I'll be an asshole.
Spring break starts on the 25th. I heard they're going to cancel most because of snow days.
Yeah, that's why. Because Fireworks fundraising is having a dirt duschment fundraiser that night.
The 11th is follows the council meeting on the 10th.
Could you do it doubleheader if you'd like Monday, Tuesday?
Our next PM personnel finance bidding is the 10th. Okay, which is a Monday, is that correct?
Yeah.
The, and you want to include budgets discussions on your work session? I think it's too close together. Because we're looking to, we've had good discussion, we've got some other issues that need to be resolved. The day after is not below our cycle time.
Do you want to, what about Thursday? Is that a workable day for somebody?
Won't work for me.
Thursday.
It's March 20th. Do you guys want to do 6:00 o'clock or? Let's do 6:00.
Is there an upcoming meeting that night?
Do we do?
Yeah.
Upcoming meetings Thursday night.
That's what happens. Okay. Well, then that puts it into April, which would be the 8th. How's that?
Tuesday, is that Tuesday?
That's a Tuesday.
April 8th.
Second Tuesday of the month.
Okay. 6.
Okay, we'll do 6:00 here. So it's truly the idea between now and then whether you can do it quarterly. I think it's probably a good idea if the mayor would agree. And, you know, currently we have in the budget enough for two extra meetings. So if we decide this is something that I could do quarterly, that would be our second one. And if we feel like we're making good progress towards some things, then we would have to, I guess, alter the budget or talk about the additional one. What about whoever funds that would be, I think it's $900 a meeting or something.
If it would help, we could move the upcoming to say 7:30. I don't know if an hour and a half would be sufficient or not. If you want to bounce from one to the other.
Yeah, I don't think there's a real hurry.
Okay.
Let's do it. Thank you. April 8th, 6:00. That is, that is it for that? Oh, sure. Well, there's nothing new to speak on at Park as of yet. We'll probably schedule something the next few weeks as spring is in the air.
All right. All right.
One thing to report, it's actually an email that I got regarding Frank Lee and the saga of Lantern Lane. Apparently the Lees are looking to sell their property. They would like to have, to be able to have, I guess, approved line or our approval or blessing on the line so that they can reflect as much in their real property disclosure from it. However, as I've reported previously, we don't know how that line, the water line, the storm sewer line was constructed because it was part of a settlement, and nobody asked us to come in and approve it or respect it. It's hard covering it up and moving on. And as far as I know, there were, at this point, we don't have any as-built, so I have no idea where the location of the lines or anything for us to approve. And so I've asked Mr. Edwards, who's attorney for the Lees, to obtain the as-built plans. He is unable to do so. He's at, basically, his correspondence to me has indicated that he's at kind of a deadlock, and he's requiring us or advising us that he wants us to take action. And we've previously had discussions on this, so I don't know really what else to report to him other than, you know, if you provide us with as-built, so at least that's a starting point, but even that alone isn't really sufficient for us to say, okay, we're going to accept that sewer line. His position is that we have a duty or obligation to approve the line, but this, we had, we weren't asked to come in. That was a settlement and a separate lawsuit. So at this point, we don't have, we don't have the ability to accept the line. And certainly we're not going to accept the liability of a nonconforming or a line that isn't properly constructed.
Sounds like exactly the same thing that came forward about two months ago, and maybe a little longer. I don't see any reason to change our position if the other council members agree.
All right. Do you need clarification on anything there?
I don't know what's going on, but if we're not voting on anything, we don't need to explain now, so we can find out later.
Fill in details. Thank you. All right.
Planning zoning met. We're done with Oak Grove, but as you saw from the email, that is not going through now. We're also reviewing the ordinance 783.04. We should have that for the next, after the next being, being the planning, the zoning needs, we'll have that for council as well as probably the Wend Energy.
Colleen, is that the property basis?
Yes.
V C X. Nothing going on?
All right. Kevin, C I C?
With Nat Hedman, I believe, Union County C I C. Both of them are next week.
Personnel and Finance.
We have about a two-hour meeting this evening. First item on the agenda was to take a look at the final appropriations, make sure that it was consistent with the directions that we had given Kevin, and we found that to be correct, and recommending approval of the first reading of the resolution to approve the final appropriations for 2014 this evening. We did talk about maybe amending the budget sometime down the road, and one of the items we talked about was coming up with a process where we could take our revenue and come up with a percentage allocation based upon various departments. Right now, it's pretty much divided between three primary areas that are sourced by the general fund. We have the administrative functions, then we have lands and buildings, and we have police. Right now, we've identified nine accounts that are revenue sources that it would be the sum of those that would form the base upon which the percentage allocation is going to be made. We've also talked about some of the funds that are set up, trying to realign those for clarity purposes. An example would be to move, potentially move Kevin, who's the village administrator, from lands and buildings to village administration. So these are types of things we're looking at. We haven't made any final decisions there, but the goal is if it's a way to clarify things, we'll probably consider it. The, we are looking at making some reserve appropriations. At the end of last year, we had several departments that money was appropriated, but it was not spent, and we're looking at making some reserve. Those funds are in reserve right now. There's definite needs. We've talked with Chief Hill. We're looking at a reserve appropriation there of about $55,000. There's a number of different funds where there's funds available for streets, lands and buildings, et cetera, and that's, that's considered one of Kevin's primary goals for this year is try to get caught up on equipment maintenance, and so that's why the fund appropriations being, reserve appropriations being considered. Jim's priority is getting a new police officer, a full-time police officer established. So Kevin's priority is more equipment related. Jim's is more personnel. We've had a lot of discussions, no final decisions made. We also talked as far as our budgeting process, a goal to have a capital improvement plan in process. I'll later clarify that. A capital improvement planning process. And basically, you take a look at your equipment needs. This is the one that Kevin put together. Chief Hill has a similar one. At this point, if we really did a good capital planning, we'd probably have to appropriate approximately $134,000 a year for lands, buildings, streets, administration, and we're looking at probably a not-to-exceed capital plan in the police area of about $75,000 per year. These are goals right now. You have to have the funds to be able to achieve the goals, so we're struggling a little bit with that right now.
Not to interrupt you, Bob, but I think we were, $75,000, I think it was a cap we were looking at, or it wasn't an annual contribution?
No, it was, I think I said not to.
You said per year.
I said not to exceed, but I should have qualified that. That is the cap. That wouldn't be the amount that would be reserved each year. We wouldn't let the fund go above that. So a lot of these items we had discussed at our prior personnel finance meeting. Discussions continue this evening, and our next meeting is on March 10th at 5:00. Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Tim, fire?
Well, the first thing happened at our meeting was Leslie came in.
Free and disturbed.
Yeah. And one of the things that we did was we hired a bowling ball firm, Paul, to represent for little things that happens. Because sometimes you can't get an answer very quick from the boss or your attorney. So then just little things that just takes a lot of stress off the man in charge out there. And the second thing that came up was they got a 2005 Mini used vehicle for sale. It's going to be listed here before long, so if you want to get in the Mini business. Used vehicle. And they bought a new life pack, the distributor. I told them, I said, I don't need one, I got one.
After him. It's comforting.
But it's nice. They all, we all have one in here probably.
Probably.
Because I think that's a, because you could say somebody liked this. That's about all I got to report.
All right. Questions? Thank you. D R V now, are we now?
We planned to have a meeting the first Monday of February, and we had some people that did not get the meeting notice, and it's been rescheduled for this coming Monday. Renee, you could remind John to, to send a notice out or call the D R V members and remind them. I'm going to try to attend that since it'll be their first meeting.
And you might mention that they could come every now and then and give a report to council. Somebody could come and report to council.
Okay.
That'd be good.
We need to figure out somebody to get to meet the chairman of the first. Because I'm going to be sitting over there.
Okay.
You've said that before. You've said that before.
Yeah.
Okay, we are skipping the pending as we don't have anything to talk about there right now. So into old business, we have second reading of Resolution 414, which is the party pool rate adjustments.
Move to pass 414.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kazer.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
And we have the second reading of Resolution 514, which is govdeals.com agreement.
Move to approve second reading of Resolution 814.
Second.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kazer.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
And the second reading of Resolution 614, now have the first conference agreement.
Move to pass Resolution 614. Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kazer.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Okay. We have a couple items in your own business. This Madison County C I C. So you, this was the one I think you didn't have previously. I think is the, right? So council, do you have any questions about this? It's a resolution authorizing the village of Plain City to enter into an agreement with Madison County Future Inc. to make it the village's lead economic development organization. I will say with this, well, I don't know if we have to do that, but we have the whole CRA is in place for the, for three different areas in Plain City, and we had this C I C in Union County actually overseeing that process, and there was a big push to change our, who we aligned with, and that happened. We are now, we have been with Madison County, and nobody then to oversee the CRAs. Should someone decide they wanted to avail themselves of that, and CRA is just kind of a match program that's in place for property owners if they want to do some improvements, for cave improvements. Yes.
I know that council made a decision to switch from Union County C I C to Madison last year. I was a part of that decision. Is that still thought to be the best course of action? Because as you've just described, all the, all the documentation that's currently in place for our CRA is going to have to be redone to bring Madison County into play and remove Union County, and that'll have to be done before we ever get into a discussion with potential developer that would be interested in the CRA. So I don't know what led to the decision to go to Madison last year. Have I just, it's, it's, it's not going to be, it's going to take some extra steps to get things done.
And there is quite a difference in the cost between the 203 and 2003 for Madison County and $3,000, $3,500 for Union.
203.
They have had a very struggling C I C, and this year, well, the end of last year, they did hire a new person for that. Previously, it was the CEO of the Chamber was overseeing it, and now they have a person for the Chamber and a person for the C I C. So I don't know, I mean, he seems like a good guy, and I don't know what all their goals are. I think Kevin has interacted with him a little more than I have because he's been going to the C I C meetings. They seem to have some good goals in place, and he's, you know, I can't say he can't do the job. I don't think, I think he can. In the past, I would say Union County has been, and this is not to say it's derogatory toward anybody, but Union County has just had a more developed program in place, and it's larger, has, could meet our needs easily. Obviously, Madison is trying to expand that some. They're hiring more people, not one person trying to do multiple roles. So it is, there is the possibility that they can handle it just as well. Now, we've never had anybody want to use the CRA either. So that's also a point to be made.
Didn't, were we in agreement with him in years past? That's, effectively, I have Bob's question.
We were aligned with Union County.
Okay, not Matt. All right.
We've worked with Madison Chamber, but not as our C I C.
Two years, two years. We've worked with both of them. Always worked with them, but we then signed on for their C I C, but we, nothing got changed for the CRA. I, well, in fact, I don't think Sean was able to oversee it because of his, his multiple responsibilities, he couldn't do it, so.
I mean, I would expect that the, the Madison C I C would update the CRA documents and assist with the filing of those, just like Union County's did. And if they, and I've met some of the new staff there, which they seem competent.
This is, as we, as I talk to you, I think what I'd like to recommend is that we hold out for one more meeting on this, and that I talked to David just to make sure that he is able and willing to oversee the CRA if that's the round we go. Good with that? All right. Okay, we'll not tell him the next meeting. All right. So then we have Resolution 714, which is a resolution for final appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the village through December 31, 2014. Can you have a motion, 714?
I'd make a motion to approve the first reading of 714.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kazer.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Madison County Chamber of People working at the Business Association meeting on Wednesday. So we're supposed to speak. Kevin's here, you know. I don't know if I, are you in town?
I cannot think about when.
Okay.
Usually, Mayor, but not likely. Okay. I see that after that resolution. See that we have some visitors this evening?
Thank you.
All right. So are you talking together or are you one by one?
We're making one presentation jointly.
Okay. So we have Sherri Baldwin.
I'm Sherri.
And Sherri. Lori Thomas. Lori Thomas and Lori Donchel. Okay, ladies. With.
Okay, ladies, with Department of Family and Children, or Family Council. So please stand up, address council. Alright, thank you. Do wanna thank you for the opportunity to be here. Um, I am Sherry Baldwin, and I serve as the Madison County Family and Children First Council Coordinator. Lovingly known as Family Council, so that we avoid all of the wordiness. Ohio Revised Code 121.37 mandated a state-level Family and Children First Cabinet Council, which, the purpose of that Cabinet Council is to bring together different agency and director heads at the state level to share information regarding the programs and services that are being provided for families and children, and to assure that adequate services are being provided, and that duplication of services is not occurring. That same code mandates that local county commissioners also establish a local Family and Children First Council. And I'm very proud to be serving as that council coordinator. We have approximately fifty to fifty-five members, which represent about thirty-five to forty different agencies. It is made up of those community agency leaders from London and across Madison County. We meet monthly at the Department of Johnson Family Services Meeting Room, 200 Midway Street, and we meet at the third Thursday of each month at nine thirty in the morning. So I send out a cordial invitation to all of you, or any of you who might be free to come to visit us, and to see a little bit more about what council does. We do meet monthly to share those ideas and information, and to seek productive ways to make all of Madison County a safe place for families and children, and a productive place to help them to meet their needs, so that they can have a good nurturing environment to raise their children within their homes. We work across agency lines, and I'm gonna give just two examples of that. The Family Council serves in Madison County, and, and as in all county government, it varies from county to county how councils are run. But in our county, we not only have a Family and Children First Council, but we have a Department of Family and Children, and Lori Dodge Dorsey serves as the Director of that department, and we work very closely hand in hand. Council is the conduit through which the revenue comes, and we serve as an administrative oversight function to help decide how those monies are spent. And then the council actually contracts with the Department of Family and Children to provide those services, and to be the, the boots on the ground, to see that those services are being provided. So council does not have any employees, but even myself, as the council coordinator, I am an employee of the Department of Family and Children First. An example of how we work together with agencies, council receives some funding that allows us to provide early childhood care while parents who need mental health services come together to joint collective group sessions. We don't pay for the mental health services, but we do receive the funding to support those services while the, the children make sure, so that they don't have to miss those sessions, because they don't have anyone to watch their children, should actually bring their children to the session, and we provide the childcare while they're there. Every two to three years, Madison County Family Council does a community needs assessment. This year, we did a much more comprehensive needs assessment, because we joined forces with the Madison County Hospital and the Madison County London City Health Department. And we did, number one, it was a, an election year, although it seems very far past, but we did not want to be adding surveys on top of surveys, so we waited until that was through. And then, rather than having three agencies, again, trying to do another survey in that kind of climate, we joined our forces collaboratively, and the fiscal part of it as well, and were able to do a very comprehensive survey, not only on social services, but on the healthcare needs of our community. In our last council meeting, which was just this past Thursday on the twentieth of February, we had a group discussion of next steps, now what do we do? We looked at the top three needs, which were identified in the needs assessment from Madison County, and by the way, that is available. If you go to the Madison County website, look at Social Services on the left-hand link, find Family Council, and that complete needs assessment, not only ours, but the hospital's report is all, is available there for anyone that would like to see what those needs are for Madison County. And we, but, but we looked to say, what are we already doing, what can we do, and where, how do we move forward? And that is not just, you know, a small group of people, but probably, we started out with thirty people in, in the room, I believe, and there was a, the schools had a sudden closure because of an electrical transformer being hit, so we had several vacate, but we still wound up with at least twenty people sitting around, sharing information and ideas. And that's the way our council works, it is very collaborative. One of the focuses of Family Council has always been prevention. We work to prevent out-of-home placements for children, because that devastates family, and it costs the county a lot of money when they go into foster care. We work to prevent child abuse, and that, and lack by providing parenting education and early childhood programs. We work with schools to identify unique ways to help youth who may be struggling with mental health, social competence, or behavioral issues. And our purpose for being here tonight specifically is that over the past two years, we've been working with a new program called PACTs, focuses on peace, productivity, happiness. And I'm going to defer the rest of this to Lori Dodge Dorsey, I'm sorry, to Lori Thomas, and let her explain a little bit about that program.
I get to do a little blurb about PACTs, which is such a great program, in fact, right at Monroe. We're also at Norwood and West Jeff, London Elementary, and there's been a couple teachers trained at Madison Plains. The goal from Mental Health Recovery Board that funds PACTs is to be in all the schools in Madison County. And PACTs, as Sherry said, it's this, Latin, peace, productivity, good health, and happiness. It's a bunch of strategies that you take into the classroom and use with kids. We're in preschool at Monroe, so you start really young, and it teaches self-regulation. This has been researched to death for years, the PACTs program. The guy that started it is Dr. Dennis Embry, fascinating guy, really into brain science. Every strategy that's used in the classroom is steeped in brain science, in regards to developing self-regulation. It's so fascinating to go into the classroom, I love doing this, because you see it work right in front of you, and it works fast. One of the small little strategies is called a tutel. And a tutel is the opposite from a tattle, and it's about using words of encouragement. Research has shown, one written tool from the teacher, given to the student about something positive that he's done, taken home to his parents, improves that child's behavior more than a visit to a mental health therapist. I don't know if any of you know, but eighty bucks is a billable rate on a medical card for a mental health therapist. This is nothing, this is nothing. So what we were talking about, we're, we're starting with the kids, and we thought how great it would be to move some of these research-based strategies into the community, because it's not just kids. These strategies not only decrease mental health disorders, they decrease drug alcohol abuse, they decrease disruptions in schools, acting out behaviors even by adults. So what we've done is come up with a little tutel for grownups, and we're gonna hopefully have the community start to tutel itself. It's not something that we can do to you, but hopefully it's something that we can do with you. Plain City has a very strong reputation in regards to its civic pride. I mean, I don't live in Plain City, I live in London, but I hear a lot about your stuff, the pool, the park, you have to leave and go on, it's just phenomenal. So I'll show you guys what, we kinda came up with some picture clues, just to get things started with tutels. Our hopes, we're gonna select some sites with the help of you guys, to have some tutel boards, some tutels available to people, citizens, grownups, that can start to say, encouraging the positive things to each other. Have them posted, even want to work with the newspapers, so that it can be publicly displayed. Research has shown that this type of encouragement that's publicly displayed, displayed and shared, increases self-confidence, productivity, and citizenship. I mean, to work together with the councils just makes perfect sense, because that's what we all want. This is all in lay terms. We're working with Dr. Jason Fruth from Wright State, and here's all the academic terms. This is, this is not my forte, but it certainly is his, so I hope you glance through this and see. So really what we're asking from the council is just participation with us, so that we can spread the good news.
He'll be coming to the Department of Job and Family Services on March twentieth, and I'll give you each one of those if you want my pass going. But he will be in our office on March twentieth to do two-hour presentation, an overview of what we're talking about, what this PACTs is, what the tutels are, what, how the communities can get involved and make their neighborhoods, communities, businesses a, a much better place, a happier place. Sounds kind of Pollyanna, doesn't it, but it, it, it works, we've seen it work in the schools, and we want Madison County to essentially be on cutting edge with, with trying to put this in the communities. So we invite you all, if you're able to, join us on the twentieth of March, there's RSVP information on there. Please join us, and in the meantime, if you do have any questions, you can get in touch with us through Sherry, any one of us would be happy to answer questions for you.
And I really do want to stress, the Mental Health Recovery Board is funding this, and the reason they're funding this is because when someone is already addicted to heroin or other opiate drugs, what can you really do? And there are, there are treatments, there are things, but the devastation has already occurred. And they are taking a very long-term upstream approach to this, we're gonna get the kids now. And so are we gonna see immediate results on the drug and alcohol addiction things? We may not, but hopefully over the long term, in the next decade, we really hope that this will make a very, very positive long-term impact in that arena, as well as in the self-regulation, and the improved academics, and in everything else that goes along with self-regulation.
I would encourage any of you, if you know any of the teachers at Monroe Elementary, ask them about PACTs and see what they have to say, cause the, the proof's there in what they've seen in their classrooms in such a short time. If you know any of the London teachers, it's happening now in London, as well as West Jefferson, so if you do know somebody in the elementary schools, just ask them.
Or blow our harmonica in front of a primary school kid, and he'll raise his hand.
I've been known to do that in my timeframe.
Our kids are learning good stuff from the schools, and we wanna pass that on to the community, so...
So are you doing this in London?
That, the training, yes, but we hope that PACTs rolls out community-wide and county-wide.
How are you doing that in the community? How do you make it happen in your, in the community?
We're gonna provide blank tutels in different stores and talk to merchants, we're going to the Chambers of Commerce with our little dog and pony show here, and West Jeff Council, Mount Sterling Council, we went to London already, to get other people to provide the blank papers. We're going to have boards put up in selected sites, so that those tutels can be changed every week and selected. At first, we will kind of work all together to select the best tutels to put on the boards. We wanna work with the newspapers too, to make sure that they're published. The websites at schools have said that they would include them on their school websites. You know, we're just gonna push them out in any way possible, that's, that's our ideas, that's why we're coming to you guys too. You know Plain City, you tell us where to put these, you know, who is gonna give us the space to put the blank tutels. You know, this is something that we all have to work together on, and, and we will see, we'll see. Cause when I am tutelled, I feel it, I mean, it, it feels good, and you pass it on. We all know that, with, with encouragement, how that works. So we're dependent on you, we, I mean, we really need the participation of the people that are busy in town, and, and know the connections, and we need you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions?
Is your funding source state or county?
Well, for, for council, we, it's, it's locally funded. But for programmatic pieces, there are, there's federal funding and state funding, and then like Mental Health Recovery Board gives us levy dollars, so that's local funding. So it's all three, all three venues.
Thank you.
And I think the other thing that we have all liked about this program is that it is so low-cost, or almost no cost.
Do you get any Medicaid dollars?
We do not currently for council, or the services that are provided by the Department of Family and Children First. One of our programs is Help Me Grow, which serves, you know, children with disabilities and delays. And there is talk that Medicaid at some point may be one of the funding sources that is used to support that particular program. And even some talk that some family services may be able to be a billable rate as case management, but that has not occurred yet.
Great, ladies, thank you.
Thank you so much. It's great seeing democracy work like this. I love it.
Alright, council, does anyone have anything else?
I just have one thing. The lights on Harrington Drive, did this ever get fixed, or who fixes those?
Those are, it depends on what it is, but Harrington is usually our repair, our responsibility, and I'm not sure if we're talking about the same one that was a while ago, I know we did fix one, the first or second one in from...
On the right.
Yeah.
On the right, on the left?
On the right.
If we're talking about the one with...
Is it out?
It was out in November.
We'll check on it, I'm not, I, I know we repaired one in there, and I'm not sure if we're talking about the same one, so we'll look at it.
Some of our lights are under contract. It's the way it's been for many years. Anything else, council?
Yeah, how are we doing on drafting legislation for foreign objects on public property? We're gonna look at that. I don't think there's a big rush on it, and probably by the time we open the park, it would be good to have something kind of cooking on that. I have another question, do we, I saw this on the news, it made me wonder, do we have mayor's court?
We do not. We do not.
Used to.
We are going to.
Yeah, I was curious, I saw some news tonight, I thought I might too.
Many, um...
They're not cost-effective.
No.
It requires mayors and attorneys, and it's much easier for you to send it up to Union County, pay them.
We can't.
Contract, we contracted Union County and Madison County to do the prosecutions on all of, all the tickets and everything that Jim does, just then take care of for us.
And I never sat in on one of our mayor's count, the mayor's courts, but I heard they were interesting, so... I, I, I know what some of the old council meetings are like, so I can imagine.
Mr. Murphy told me that was worse than his job, was having that.
Oh, I, I have no doubt about it.
He, he, he made that worse.
Yeah, no, it's all handled contractually. Any other questions? Any, John, did you have anything to say? Are you gonna?
No.
I have something for him.
You have nothing to say? Lay down. We're giving you the opportunity.
Alright, council, how, entertain a motion?
No. Motion to adjourn.
Over leaving? I guess I'm...
Alright.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Are you?
Yeah.